Okay, let's go ahead and call the order of the July eighteenth Board of Trustees Special Meeting, the time being six thirty-two P M. Uh, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Daly? Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Teets?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Mayor Protim McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Shosse. Thank you, we have a quorum.
Are there any proposed amendments to this evening's agenda? Are there any conflicts of interest on the agenda items this evening? Okay. Public comment. We'll now proceed to item B one, public comment. Individuals wishing to provide public comment on non-agenda items, please sign in on the sheet at the table behind you and state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes to provide public comment.
Lisa Cholet, seventy-four twenty-four, Homestretch Drive. I wrote down my comments tonight, so. Good evening, Mayor Protim and trustees. Here tonight to share my concerns regarding some observations I've made over the last few weeks in Wellington. While I've not been attending trustee meetings in person as often, I have continued to participate online as an observer. Additionally, I've taken the opportunity to watch other meetings in town such as the Post Board and the Finance Committee. As a planning commissioner, I'm obviously aware of what is happening in those meetings. I've made a concerted effort since early October twenty-twenty-one to be an informed and involved citizen. My comments tonight are based on my participation in the town of Wellington as an observer, a planning commissioner, a two-time Water and Sewer Roundtable member, and as a taxpayer. The tone, comments, and conduct of some of the Finance Committee members during the June meeting, the comments made during board reports last week, I believe, and the letter issued by a former Finance Committee member have compelled me to stand here today and ask, what the heck is going on? The to, in light of the near implosion, as Fire Board Member Pearson described it, of the operations side of the fire department, I fear that it is the road we are on in this town if we're not careful. It is no secret that the town of Wellington has been working hard to right the ship after the many issues of the past. As trustees, your job is to set the policy and the vision of this town. As our government is your job to represent each of us through the policy and vision. It is not your job to interfere with operations, subtly or overtly attack town staff, or act in the place of any one of the valuable staff members we have managed to keep. I was appalled at the behavior towards staff at the Finance Committee meeting last month. I was dismayed at the subtle and not-so-subtle criticisms of our town administrator during the last board minute meeting, which I think it was that one. I'm thoroughly disgusted at the sharing of information by former employees with citizens participating in our finance committee. Furthermore, I find it very disturbing that sunshine laws were violated by that committee, that accusations were hurled towards our town administrator by two formal disgruntled and incapable finance managers, and that it would appear it was condoned and perhaps aided by one or more trustees. We are fortunate to have the staff, the town staff, and specifically Mrs. Garcia, who has stuck with us despite public shaming of them by this board and the previous board, of which some of you were a part of. In that vein, I would like to point out what I believe to be important. Our town org chart goes something like this. Citizens, you all as Board of Trustees, Town Administrator, Department Heads, and so on. If this is in fact the case, which I believe it is, then I would like for you to each think about this. Department heads are accountable to the town administrator, who is accountable to this board, who is accountable to us, the citizens and taxpayers of this town. We trust you to do your job properly as you hold yourselves out to be capable of what you ran for election. We do not suppose to know or understand the minute details of your job.
I request to give the speaker my time.
Approved.
In the same vein, the town administrator hires the Public Works Director and trusts that he can do the job he held himself out to do. This would be saying the same for the Planning Director and the Finance Director and so on. Our Public Works Director is an engineer. He makes decisions every day using his specialized skills. If he makes errors, it would be unrealistic to expect the town administrator to catch it right away because she is not an engineer. If our planning director administratively approves something and is in error, do we expect the town administrator to catch this right away as well? She's not an urban planner. If the Finance Director fails to properly code G L transactions, do we expect the town administrator to knock on their door and say, hey, you did that wrong? No, because she's not an accountant. If we are expecting a public administration specialist to also have degrees in engineering, urban planning, and accounting, then we are living in a pipe dream. As in all business, there is a hierarchy and people are hired in a mid-level or department lead position with an expectation that they can perform their specialized and often degree-required job. We cannot reasonably expect our town administrator to be qualified to do all of those jobs, and there simply isn't enough time in the day to do her job, at one point, the clerk job, and micromanage every employee. This would seem to be common sense, which leaves me to scratch my head. Why on earth are we so hostile towards those who try so hard to run this town on a day-to-day basis? People make conscious cho, a conscious choice to work in Wellington. Every position requires people to accept less pay typically, work harder and longer, and wear multiple hats. I'm grateful for our staff, even those who may have been in over their heads and moved on. I implore you, support our staff, support Mrs. Garcia, help them find solutions to make our town better and more efficient. Do not continue to target them. This is unfair. It's not right, and they do a wonderful, wonderful job. And to side with one staff member over someone who's been entrusted and has done a wonderful job helping this town get back on its feet, I'm embarrassed and I'm really, really sad because I think Wellington is better than this. I do not want to see this town go backwards. Thank you.
Don Peacock? There's been a lot of clutching of pearls lately when it comes to the Finance Department. You know what they say, when the cat's away, the mice will play. And Nick, the President of the Finance Committee, I think that's his title, was away and had appointed Dominic acting president while he was gone, and boy, was that an interesting choice after Don's unprofessional outburst in the prior meeting. Don contacted Ms. Garcia on July tenth and updated the committee via email that in my capacity as acting president for the next meeting, I told Patty that I do not want to review any in-progress financial statements for twenty-twenty-three. And then, of course, he resigned immediately after the meeting because Daddy Nick would probably have had words for him for abuse of power and kicked him out anyway. Here's the thing, there are problems. There have been problems all the way back to Judy and before, and in the ninety-page diatribe that Dom released with lots of old receipts from years ago that were paid under Judy and complaints from charity about spending taxpayers' money, I'm wondering why board members from that time didn't question the hundred and two-hundred-dollar phone stipends to Judy or the nearly nine-hundred dollars to slurp for a party or thirty-six dollars in furniture, thirty-six thousand dollars in furniture for the Harrison House, when American Furniture Warehouse has office furniture and would have been half that. Dom included complaints about the purchasing policy, yet in April of twenty, April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one trustee meeting, Judy presented the purchasing policy that spells out the P cards, and according to the April twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one trustee meeting packet, Judy stated when P cards are issued to staff, they sign a P card agreement, staff are required to allocate purchases to correct funds and upload receipts to the P card system. The finance team also reviews the purchases to make sure that they're allocated appropriately. Trustee Gator commented that he did not have issues with thresholds in that meeting. On June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, Resolution twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two was presented, bringing charity on board. It stated that Trustee Gator participated in that process, and she was recommended by Trustee Gator, and yet there are G L errors all over the place in the books that have since been found and are being corrected. All, also earlier in the year, Gator moved to approve selection of the auditor who was approved with no objection and is now complaining about not having the audits. Sorry, John, but Trustee Gator, you want it both ways. You want to complain about the firm and point fingers at the staff while you're one of the, while you're the person who voted for him. In multiple instances, Charity stated that cash was missing and that she thinks Ms. Garcia is the only other person with the key. The wording used was very insinuating, and as often as Trustee Gator jumps to the defense of other trustees when accusations are thrown about, I hope he will come to the aid of Ms. Garcia in this instance, rather than adding additional accusations. You'll also hear complaints about Ms. Garcia and that she's the reason why Judy and others quit their positions, and I can personally tell you that I have heard an equal number, if not more, complaints stating that certain members of the board are the reason why they choose to leave. This is all tit-for-tat. Stop the bullying, stop the bullying and the bashing, there's work to be done. We're finally finding the errors and cleaning them up.
Any further public comment? Next, we'll proceed to action items.
Mayor Protim, please note, Trustee Daly joined the meeting virtually at six thirty-four.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the title of the first action item?
Item C one, Resolution Number twenty-four dash twenty-twenty-three, Baker Tilly, U S L L P Engage Engagement Letter to Provide Financial Management Services to the Town of Wellington.
Ms. Patty Garcia, Town Administrator, will present this item. Ms. Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor Protim and Trustees, Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. You have before you tonight Resolution Number twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three, which is to consider a letter of engagement with Baker Tilly for financial management services. Town staff share the same mission of the Board of Trustees, Finance Committee, and Wellington residents. Our goal is to create financial transparency and increase operational efficiency. We are committed to improving the organization's financial health and believe this is the proper step to achieve our goal with the support of a third party. Tonight, I will be reviewing the following: the requests for qualifications, duration of contract, and cost of services. First, I will speak to the requests for qualifications with, which aligns with the town's purchasing policy. A request for qualifications was published for my net or financial management services, and the town received three responses. Two finalists were interviewed on June twenty-fifth by an interview committee made up of trustee Brian Mason, trustee John Gator, Nick Riddiavod, representing the Finance Committee, Bob Gowing, Public Works Director, Cody Byrd, Planning Director, Kelly Hodling, Deputy Town Administrator, and myself. The interview committee recommended the appointment of Baker Tilly, being represented by Don Rhodes to provide financial management services to the town. Mr. Rhodes has more than twenty-nine years of public sector experience, including serving as a Finance Director for the City of Monterey and the Chief Financial Officer for the City of Beverly Hills. He is experienced in operational and capital budgeting, strategic financial planning, accounting and financial reporting, capital improvement planning, analysis and strategies related to unfunded liabilities, as well as staff development and team building. Mr. Rhodes received his Bachelor of Science in Business Administration and Accounting from California State University and received his Master of Liberal Arts from Harvard University. The initial contract is for six months, and then service needs will be reassessed to determine the needs moving forward with an opportunity for a contract extension. If this item is approved by the Board of Trustees tonight, staff has scheduled a contract review and evaluation of the effectiveness of services at the December nineteen, twenty-twenty-three work session. The expense estimate for these services in twenty-twenty-three is approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. The town's leadership team is supportive of bringing Baker Tilly on board to assess policies, procedures, and to get Wellington on a strong financial path moving forward, and will provide funds from their department budgets to cover the expense for twenty-twenty-three. The majority of the funds are coming from salary savings, projects being under budget or deferred, and professional fees. Ongoing professional service expenses for Baker Tilly will be built into the twenty-twenty-four budget. The breakdown of the specific line items and general ledger codes for the funds being used in twenty-twenty-three are in your packet. I'd like to note that the library's contribution will be pulled from shelving and furnishing and professional development. As your town administrator, I remain steadfast in my goal to have our processes and policies looked at from an outside view. I'm committed to creating process improvements in our Finance Department. Bringing in Mr. Rhodes will help us lay a solid foundation for the future of Wellington so it can be, be prepared to solicit candidates in the future to fill the role of the Finance Director and Treasurer. Mr. Rhodes is here and is ready to speak if you would like him to approach.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Do we have any questions or comments from members of the board regarding the pack, contents of the packet or for Mr. Baker this evening?
I do.
But.
Um, so a couple of questions that I have is, I know we have a really broad scope of work, and I know the initial in the engagement letter, the thought was that it would take somewhere between twenty-five to thirty-five hours a week for the first, oh, da-da-da, I think you guys said eight weeks, yeah, for an estimate, eight weeks, and then it, from there, it would reduce down to twenty-five hours, but the amount we've budgeted is only at the twenty-five-hour level. And so within the scope of work, I'm just trying to understand realistically, how much of that can you accomplish within the twenty-five hours? If you have any ideas on that.
You want to speak?
Good, good evening, I'm happy to be here and that, for that question, what I, what I would like to do is, is start with kind of the, the fundamentals because there are some things that we need to get squared away kind of first. So for instance, I'd like to become familiar with the general ledger and the city's financial system, and where did fund balance end up at the end of last year, where is the audit in that, in the process? And then we've, we've got the budget process going on right now, and so that'd be another thing that I would jump into. So I, I would say in the first six months for that twenty-five to thirty-five hours, we would focus on really making sure the general ledger is rock solid and that our financial reporting is, is really reliable. I, I'm not saying that it isn't. I haven't put a ton of time into, you know, what the issues are just yet, you know, until we, we see if the contract is, is approved. But I would want to make sure the financial reporting was, was really solid. And then, of course, the budget has to get done, and so that process has already started, as I understand it, and so I would want to pick up on that. Other, other things that are in the tasks, if there are any operational issues within the finance department right now, just things that aren't getting done, aren't getting done timely. Again, I'm not saying there are, there are, but things like that we'd want to focus on right at the beginning. Other areas, if there isn't time in the first six-month contract, it, it might get pushed towards the end of the six months or into the next, you know, in, into any extension if there isn't.
Excellent, and I think that the reporting you hit on that, because I think if you don't have good, solid reporting, you really can't do a budget because you don't actually know what you're working with. What would that look like in terms of process of figuring out where, and I think that, you know, staff has brought up, there were errors from the last Finance Director, so they've, they've fixed some of those errors, there are still errors that are being fixed. How would you go about trying to get to the cause, right, so we don't continue creating errors?
Sure, and there's where I, I feel like I might have a little bit of advantage because just a little bit more on my background, I kind of came up through the accounting side of the municipal finance business. I, I started out, I, I'm in a national CPA firm now, that's how I started my career. I am a CPA, and I started by auditing cities and special districts and school districts and things like that. So I gained a good understanding of governmental accounting background from there. So I think having that, that accounting background connection, and it's, it sounds kind of nerdy probably, but I would just do a deep dive on the general ledger and, and make sure that the numbers that are there are rock solid because everything has to tie to something. That's the neat thing about finance, that's the neat thing about balance sheets is they, they have to balance, and every number on there, there's documentation for it. If you say there's this much cash, well, where's the bank statements and the bank reconciliations at a certain date to get to that, that point? Same with, you know, fixed assets, same with accounts payable, I mean, there's documentation. The auditors go through this, so I, I'm really interested in, in meeting with the auditors and see what they've, what they've found. But that's, that would be the beginning point, is just make sure that the general ledger is rock solid, and then get familiar with the financial accounting system to make sure that the financial reports that are coming from it tie back to the general ledger. Numbers tying and, and if you see a budget report, if you see a financial report, you see an audit report, the numbers should all tie, they should all be connected somehow. A budget is different from an audited financial statement because an audited financial statement looks at the past. The budget is predicting to the future, but they still have ties. I mean, that fund balance, that, that's a point where they need to come together, or you're not, you're not looking at the right number. So I, that's where I would start with, with just really the debits and the credits and the balance sheet and the income statement. Start with there, but then quickly that would need to fold into, okay, what did we learn from there? Now we've got a budget to do. You start with the beginning, fund balance, you see what revenue estimates look like, and then you go, you go from there. Certainly.
Um, since we have trustee Daly on the line, does she, does she have any comments or questions?
I don't at this time, thank you. I think that packet was put together very well and all the line items for the costs, it's much appreciated, and answered all the questions.
Sorry.
Were you able to hear me?
And good, the packet was very thorough.
Yes, hello, so I had the pleasure of sitting in on the Finance Committee's meeting last night to listen to some comments, questions, concerns, additional information that I wanted to bring back here because I cannot answer the questions that they were asking. So I said I would bring them back. One thing that was brought up from the meeting is if we as trustees can look at a not-to-exceed on the budgeted item, so say we start hitting two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in the six months, when does it come back to us? Is there an amount that we can look at to say, okay, we need to evaluate this, or? So that was one thing brought up in finance, the finance meeting last night. The other one, which I thought was actually a great idea, is if we do plan on this engagement lasting the twelve to eighteen months that was projected possibly, if there is a possibility to do a one-year lock-in on your hourly rates, so therefore, if you guys change your rates as of January one, is there a possibility to, if we're going to be entering into this agreement long-term, the twelve to eighteen-month mark? There is a big difference between the one-seventy-five negotiated compared to the actual rate after that eight weeks. Is there a possibility to look at a contract that says for one year, this is going to be the amount that we charge you for your services, and then readdress there if we need to move forward from the twelve months to the eighteen-month period? Another question was, was will you be looking at and evaluating management lever, letters from previous year's audits to verify that policies and procedures that were implemented and put into place are continuing to be implemented and put into place? That was a question that was brought up last night, and then internal control measures. Will you be walking through internal control measures to verify that items are being done the way that our ordinance or laws state they are to be done in our town? So that was the questions that were brought up. Like I said, I can't answer them, so I figured this would be a perfect opportunity to hear some information on that. My other thing was, and this is more of an item for me, I would like to see a cash handling policy drafted. If we can have that professionally completed, accomplished, that would be wonderful. It is my knowledge and understanding now that we do not have a cash handling policy. So having that, I feel, will help alleviate some of the conflicts and concerns that we've seen come up from some of the Finance Committee members' questions from the meeting last night. Other than that, I am very excited to get to see this and experience this firsthand and be a part of a board that puts something in place that helped protect the town moving forward. I think that's one of the most important things is making sure that we have appropriate procedures. We aren't always going to be sitting on this board in twenty, thirty years, so having something appropriately set up and addressing it on a regular basis, I think, will be a really good thing for our community.
Okay, I, I can address some of those here, if you like, the, the management letter from the auditors. Yes, I will be very interested, that'll be actually one of the first things I would, I would do to get an update from the auditors as to where we are with the ongoing audits. And that included in that would be the management letters, because that's where they, they share with the town, what did they find, things that weren't big enough to like squash the audit, they didn't have to give an adverse opinion, but there might, might have been a deficiency or something that they noted that they thought was important enough, they should bring it up. So that's, that's one of the first things I would look at, because that would give us some clue as to, is there areas, operational areas that we might need to look at? In that speaks to the internal control as well, because auditors also provide not only a management letter, but also any kind of internal control weaknesses they, they found. And so if there are any like that, then that would be another thing that we would focus on, certainly. Cash handling is, yeah, we, we can certainly look at that. Whether that would be in the first couple of months, when we're trying to get the general ledger squared away to the extent that is it, it may be, again, I don't know. But working with the general ledger and the financial reporting and the budget, so it may not be in the first couple of months, but cash handling, part of the tasks are reviewing the town's financial policies and procedures and update as necessary. I would see cash handling as, as one of those policies and procedures, so we would certainly make sure that that was, that was included there. And then finally, as far as the hourly rate issue goes, my understanding is that we've got, it's a six-month contract to begin with, right? And so there would be that opportunity at six months to, to look at things again. As far as locking in an hourly rate for a longer period of time, that, that's something I would have to talk to our, our contract folks about, but that, I'd certainly be willing to, to do that, but the initial commitment is just the six months. If you want to add to that.
And so there was a question for, about the not-to-exceed, and what I proposed last night to the Finance Committee was that we would watch what the billing looks like, because we, we've never done this before, so we're making an estimate. So if we start, if we hit, you know, November and it looks like we're at the hundred-and-six-thousand-dollar mark or getting close to, and I need to report out to you all, I need to come up with some additional funds to cover that through the rest of the year, because I've committed for us as town staff to cover those expenses through twenty-twenty-three. So we will keep you updated with regular reports on, you know, what the status is as far as billing and projects that are being completed and things like that, and I think it's important to keep the trustees involved and up to speed on that.
I could just add one other point that maybe might provide some comfort. Most of my career was the Finance Director or CFO of a, of a city. The last five years, I've been working with Baker Tilly or the company that Baker Tilly purchased as well in this, in this kind of capacity. Brighton, Colorado was one of the first clients that I had after I left Beverly Hills, and they were in a similar circumstance where their, their Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director had left all at once, and so they needed somebody to come in and, and, and help kind of steady the ship and get the budget done and things like that. That's the kind of role I've been playing, I will say mostly in California, because that's, that's where my, my background was, and so that's where I, most of my, my clients came from. But municipal finance is kind of municipal finance with, with some differences state to state. So I, I've gotten to where I, I put the time in that I need to, to do to get the tasks done that we've, you know, we've agreed to, there are the important things to do. I don't, I'm not going to hang around and just kind of run up hours and things like that. So if that, if that helps any, I, I, I work on the tasks that we have laid out, but it's not, I, I do try to keep the hours down to the, to the extent possible.
Perfect, thank you, so very much. Okay. I'd like to acknowledge, one of the first questions that you mentioned was about policy about thresholds. The Finance Committee had questions about that. I think that that would be very appropriate for the board discussion in our budget retreat. I think that that would be something that would be appropriate for us to discuss as a team and decide once we're all together, so, great suggestion. And I love the idea of sticking to reviewing policy and not diving into operational oversight. Trustee Wigan?
No further questions, I think there are good questions and good answers, appreciation.
Trustee Mason?
Yeah, Mr. Rhodes, thank you for coming down. I, Trustee Teets, actually, her and I had chatted earlier, so one of the, specifically regarding the cash handling policy and understanding that you might have an opportunity to review that after some of the other priorities that we've got coming up, certainly the budget and audits are of the utmost concern. So, yeah, I very much forward, look forward to having you get started, so.
Mayor Protim, I believe, trustee Daly?
Oh, you want to get the channel?
Okay. Yes.
Hi, I'm just testing my audio, can you guys hear me now?
You're good.
Great, great, thanks. My comments earlier were that the packet was very thorough, I appreciate all the line items breakdown. So I don't have any questions, I thought it was very well presented, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Daly. Okay, um, are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? Hey. Do I hear motion?
I had a question real quickly, so on the idea of reporting back, I appreciate that. I don't want to hamstring Baker Tilly and being able to get stuff done. What I'd like to propose, I think Ms. Garcia said to the Finance Committee, potentially they could come up with another ten to thirteen thousand dollars out of the budget elsewhere, is maybe just at the stipulation that if it looks like we're going to hit over a hundred-and-twenty thousand for the year, at that point, we'd ask Ms. Garcia to report back to us as a board.
For the twenty-twenty-three budget year?
Yes, for the twenty-twenty-three budget year. So basically, if it's going to go over a hundred-and-twenty thousand, so that gives a, because I honestly, I think it's going to take a little bit more than twenty-five hours in the beginning, and I don't want them to And I don't want them to feel like, I don't want to drag it out. Um, I know trustee Mason mentioned we need to get to budget. Budget is pointless without good numbers. And so we want him to be able to dig into that. So I don't want to be like, oh, well, don't come spend hours. So that gives us a little bit of room where if that needs to be expanded, Ms. Garcia can find it on her own. But if now gets to the point where we're past a hundred and twenty thousand, then bring that back to us so we can have a further discussion. Is that something the board's comfortable with?
It makes it go faster, absolutely.
Does that work for you?
Yes, it does. Thank you for the recommendation.
Do we need to make an adjustment to that then?
Um, I guess that's a question I don't.
I think we can reflect it in the minutes.
Okay, so let's make sure it's reflected in the minutes. That's understood that if it's going to go over. Um, I didn't see anything on terms in contract. Is that going to be done separately after the fact, the six months? How does that work?
What I would recommend trustee Gator is uh, a motion to approve the resolution with your amendment clarifying the direction of staff.
Perfect. I can do that. So I'd like to move that we approve resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-two-three Baker Tilly US LLP engagement letter to provide financial management services to the town of Wellington with the stipulation that if the contract is trending over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-three budget year, that staff will bring that back to the board of trustees for further discussion.
I second.
Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on. Are there any final comments or direction for members of the board?
Um, for my final comments, to thank you, Mr. Rhodes, for coming down. And I appreciate that your focus is really going to be on getting to making sure we have solid numbers to start with. And I'm that was one of the concerns that was brought up in finance committee. And that's been my concern because if you don't have good data going into budget and other things, it's kind of just not. So it's good to hear that you're going to focus on making sure that we've got good information because I'd rather we have a budget that maybe is not as fancy. It's not as exciting and entertaining as it could be, but it's got good solid numbers behind it. Than to have a really fancy looking budget, but we don't know the numbers. So I really appreciated you giving clarity to where your focus would be. And I think that's what we need. Um, so I appreciate that. And those are my final comments.
Any other final comments? Okay, Ms. Garcia, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention and for having the courage to ask the board for professional help to provide additional oversight for the financial transparency of the community. Uh, with that being said and hearing no further comments, will the clerk please take the roll call?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Will the clerk please read the title of the second action item?
Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-two-three, appointment of town treasurer.
Ms. Garcia will also present this action item. Ms. Garcia.
Okay, with the uh, with the approval of the contract of the engagement letter with Baker Tilly, um, resolution twenty-five twenty-two-three is to appoint Baker Tilly represented by Don Rhodes as the town treasurer. Simple as that.
I make a mo- oh.
I appreciate your uh, gumption there. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? Uh, we'll start with trustee Daly. Okay, uh, we'll come back to trustee Daly if she has additional comments. Go ahead, trustee Teets.
For a motion?
Oh, comments.
Oh, no.
Comments or questions? Trustee Gator?
Comments.
Trustee Wiegand? Trustee Mason. Okay, no comments from myself? Great. Um, are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? Great. Um, do I hear a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-two-three, a resolution to the appointment town treasurer.
I was seconding.
Excellent. Are there any final comments or direction from the board on this item? Hearing no further comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. It appears we've lost trustee Daly. Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Thank you.
For clarification, the record will that be seven oh seven in the minutes for trustee Daly?
It'll be seven oh five.
Thank you. Okay. Will the clerk please read the title of the third action item, please?
Reconsideration of resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two-three, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, amending expenditures for the fiscal year twenty-two budget.
Great. Ms. Garcia will also present on this item.
Finally, before you have a reconsideration of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two-three, which failed at the last meeting with a tie vote. Trustees Mason Daly and Mayor Protem had voted for the resolution and trustees Wiegand, Teets and Gator voted against the resolution. A motion to reconsider must be heard by a board member who voted on the prevailing side, which would be a trustee who voted against the against resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two-three. If the motion to reconsider passes, staff is requesting that an additional motion be made to continue resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two-three to the July twenty-fifth, twenty-two-three Board of Trustee meeting so that the updated financial information can be included in the packet. So there's two motions. Hopefully.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? Okay. Any comments from the public on this agenda item? Do I hear a motion? Make them, I you need a motion to bring it back and a motion to postpone, a motion to bring it back and.
So the only that we can, the only motion we're looking for right now is a motion to reconsider. This, the resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two-three. Um, a motion to reconsider would not allow us to make this payment to um, North Pooter Irrigation Company in the future.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider resolution number twenty.
You can, has to be someone that had voted against it. So it would need to come from trustees Wiegand, Teets or Gator.
We're not going to pay the water bill?
So motion reconsider is in order when there's been new information brought to light to cause me to reconsider my vote. No new information has been provided. Um, North Pooter has given us the option to pay the bill in portion so that staff can absolutely pay tomorrow the budgeted amounts and bring back a different resolution. Um, but at this time, there's been no new information presented to me to cause me to reconsider my vote.
Even though we just put professionals on board to get the finances lined out?
That's not new information to relevant to this specific resolution.
I I think the bigger point that staff is trying to make is that we need a motion to reconsider so that we can table this vote for the next July meeting so that we can have that information brought to us. If we do not have this tonight, I I think we're being derelict in our duties.
Paying our water bill. I mean, we expect our citizens to pay their bill when it arrives regardless of what the meter has read. We'll go out there and we'll double check it. But we still demand payment within thirty, sixty, ninety or a hundred and twenty days. Why wouldn't we be subject to the same on our own water bill?
So I'd like to point out that we received this bill in December of twenty-two. And this was brought to our attention last week. So that was already a eight months. Um, I had requested ahead of time that information be provided. That information was not provided. I had made a motion to table this, which is always in order because it is a submotion that was declined. And so the board took a vote. At this point, I am not, have not received new information still that would cause me to reconsider my vote. Staff has the ability to pay up to the two million dollars. It's budgeted right now. North Pooter has given us the permission to be able to make a partial payment. There is options to bring back a different resolution. The other concern that I have is this resolution does not speak to where we are pulling money out. It simply says we're going to spend more. It doesn't say we're reducing expenses somewhere else and increasing them here. It just simply says we're straight increasing. So at this point, no, I'm not willing to reconsider because I've not been provided the information I requested over a week ago.
So if I may, um, I understand the the comprehensive of derelictive duty. I I do understand that. But the generalized idea of this is at our last meeting, it was specifically requested and we were told it would come to us was a listing of where we are pulling all of these additional funds from. If it's just coming from, oh, we're going to pun from pull from fund balance, there goes another six hundred thousand dollars. And we're just going to pull it from fund balance, but we have no responsibility to say we need to know where this money is coming from before we vote to approve something blindly. That I feel that was the the question and concern this last week at our meeting. We were informed that it would, those totals would come back to us on where we were pulling funds from, making sure that we weren't pulling them from a required or needed CIP projects, canceling out fixing some area of road here in town. It was more an understanding, yes, we do get the bill needs paid. But the motion to reconsider is based on new information that is brought to us and that information was not brought to us. We can pay the approved two million. I think it's just a little over two million dollars. That leaves a six hundred thousand dollar deficit that needs to be paid. That's not saying that we can't have that motion come to us to allocate the additional six hundred thousand dollars. This next go round when we understand where we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. So and that that's responsible spending is knowing that we're not grasping funds out of the air from different accounts. We, I'm saying, yes, we need to pay the bill, but we still have to have an understanding of where we're grasping those funds from. It's a generalized knowledge that's not controlling operational any kind of means of how they do their job. That's saying you're coming before the trustees and asking to extend your buzz budget over six hundred thousand dollars. And at the end of the day, that fund amount, when they release that APR rate and they release the water allocations per share in January, I want to say, we had no idea that this was going to come to a head of where it did come to a head in December. So that is a concern of mine. Um, I just want to make sure I know if I'm approving an additional six hundred thousand dollars, I want to know where that money is coming from before I vote to approve it. That's all. I'm not saying I won't approve it next time, but I want to understand where those funds are coming from. That's a responsibility and an understanding. So that's the only reason why I will not be making that motion. We can say that they can fund the two million dollars. That's fine. That's an allocated budgeted amount already. But I would like to know where those additional funds are coming from, and it was not brought to us this time.
Well, I have a a quick question for you about that. Do you think it would be more appropriate to hold the staff accountable for delivering on that instead of holding our water provider hostage? Because ultimately, not paying our bill to North Pooter puts us in a bad position with our water provider. I think that we can go about holding our town administrator accountable for providing that information to us in a better and a different way without holding our water bill hostage. Like, we expect our citizens to be responsible about paying their water bill. We should be responsible about that. And if Patty is our our checkbook in essence or the our accountant that advises us on how to manage our finances at home, let's hold our staff accountable here and not hold the bill hostage. The bill has to be paid, no matter what. So let's give Patty a timeline that's reasonable, not not a week. It sounds like we have some GL cleanup to happen.
Um, we do. So may I interject? We did not have that information pulled together until late last week. Um, we ended up going in and having to double check the budget amendments that had been done. When you remember when Vic was here, there were budget amendments done. So we needed to go back and look at those budget amendments and make sure that everything tied together. We did not have that information in time for the packet. I did not, and I apologize, I do not, did not understand that part of the rules of Bob Roberts rules that there had to be more information or new information for reconsideration. So I I accept that. That's on me. Um, but and whatever you all decide, but we do, we have information now. It but I didn't want to present it at the last minute to the board of trustees since you didn't have a chance to review it. So that's where I'm at. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Trustee Teets, any anything?
So when is the due date on this bill?
Megan, Megan is in contact with North Pooter. She'll have that information.
Mayor Protem, trustees Megan Smith, deputy director of Public Works. Um, I have been working with uh, Tadmo and general manager of North Pooter Irrigation Company um, on the weekly. So we met last week as well. This topic was not covered at that. It was a related to ongoing conversations, negotiations with the company. Um, they're working with us to be flexible to our needs and uh, for this payment. So their terms um, are such at the moment that we're not accruing interest on this bill. Um, it's just like any bill that we have, though. It's, you know, technically was due thirty days from the corrected date that it was sent, which was December of last year. Um, I did want to yes, that's all.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Trustee Teets? No further questions. Okay, thank you so much. Trustee Wiegand?
Okay, it sounds like we got two million, a little bit over that to pay for it right now. And I think the concern is just as far as getting the new information. You know, if we can have that even by next week, we can get that final payment done at that point, correct?
But we have to do a motion for reconsideration to postpone it.
Okay.
It can simply be brought back in a new resolution. I am saying that new information has not been presented to me on this resolution. Um, Bob's rules doesn't have a hard fast. You cannot. But a motion to reconsider is not, I didn't like the outcome, so therefore there's a motion to reconsider.
Trustee Mason? Comments or questions for that?
I I would back up what the mayor Protem says on this. I mean, quite frankly, staff has agreed to bring us the requested information at the next meeting. So it seems to me either there's a question here of, we don't trust the staff to bring back the requested information, or I mean, if the hangup is just that, well, we don't have the new information tonight, I'm I'm not sure that that's I'm not following that really.
Well, I would hope that we provide the same grace to our water utility bill customers when they need ex- have extenuating circumstances or waiting for additional information from their employers and need order to be able to address a situation or pay their bills. And we do. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Okay. This D.
D.
Thank you. Well, having no further business on special meeting agenda, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and begin the work session for the evening?
So moved?
Second.
Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
No.
Thank you. The motion carries.
We get to roll right into the work session? All right.
Mayor Protem, if you would, please call German and note the time.
Sorry, we adjourned at seven twenty PM.
Thank you.
Um, I'll now call to order the work session of July eighteen at seven eight, sorry, seven twenty-one PM. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Daly? Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Teets?
Here.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Shosse? Thank you.
Okay.
Well, the the first item on the agenda, um, I'll come stand up just for just for vote. Dan Sapienza, town attorney. Um, the first item on the agenda tonight is part of something we had brought and discussed with the board. a couple of months ago. It's kind of an effort that the town staff would really like to undertake and that's code cleanup. The Wellington general or municipal code has been adopted over a long period of time with a lot of bits and pieces brought from different places. It's parts of it are kind of a hodgepodge, I'll say. I think it's one of the duties of the town and certainly one of things that I would appreciate if the town board would do is take a look at this code, we can revise parts of it, clean up parts of it, get rid of obsolete parts of it. And the section that I've put in here is Chapter 10. Chapter 10 is the general offenses of the town of Wellington. I started working on this project, actually I looked at my notes and it was back in 2019. So some of the changes you see on this are from 2019, that's how long it's kind of languished. And and one of the reasons for that is it is a big section, it is an important section. And I wanted to get a lot of input. So as I started looking at this and started making changes, Brad March and I in my office have discussed this at length, I've had my law clerk go over it a million times. Thanks, Ben. And there's a lot to it. This section's it's pretty long. I've met with Limer County Sheriff's Office on this a couple of times because I really want their input. And I've had a couple of conversations with various people in our municipal court. The original plan of looking at Chapter 10 was decriminalization. I know, Trustee Wiegand's looking at me with a with a bright, big bright eyes. Oh, he's even put his glasses in his mouth, he's intrigued, he's really got his attention with that, didn't I? So in the town of Wellington, we have a criminal code, we have criminal offenses and we have municipal, it's called municipal offenses. A potential penalty for a criminal offense in the town of Wellington that goes through our municipal court is is jail time. I'll tell you, I can't tell you the last time that our municipal court judge sentenced somebody to jail time. There's a lot of reasons for that. One is our municipal court, if you've never attended it, is right here. Our municipal judge sits where the mayor sits, it's a relatively informal, smaller court. The other, but probably the bigger factor is Limer County Sheriff's Office, when they write citations and summons into our municipal court, they have a lot of discretion and there are huge parts of the municipal code that are lesser offenses than what would normally go to county or district court. So when a sheriff's officer confronts, contacts somebody and say it's a theft charge, they could write a number of different levels of charges and really the the most, the lowest level charge that they might write would be a municipal theft charge. If it's something more serious, they'll write misdemeanor, they could write a felony theft charge and and the town would never see any of that. I should, the town court, municipal court would never see any of that. So really the offenses that come into municipal court are already sort of lower level criminal offenses. And it's nice for the sheriff's office to still have that, so I'm not asking that theft not be a violation of the town code. Because there's definitely times where theft might occur and those sheriff's deputies look at that charge and say, this is something that should be handled locally. And that's really what the municipal court's all about is local handling municipal problems at the local level. We can have sentences for community. What is the word I'm looking for? Volunteer, community service, thank you, trustee. Community service, that can be handled right here in the town of Wellington. We have classes that often the municipal court will sentence people to. There are fines, there's a lot of lot involved with it, a lot of options. Jail doesn't necessarily need to be one of those. If it's jail is probably a correct sentence, likely that person didn't receive a municipal summons. They were already going to county court, district court, you know, or district attorney will see them and will be able to handle those offenses. So it's not asking that theft not be a crime. It's saying when that theft is written into municipal court, removing jail time as a possible sentence. Why would we do that other than we don't use it? One of the big reasons is money, quite honestly. As soon as jail time becomes a potential sentence, the defendant is actually eligible for public defender potential possibly, depending on their income. And the town of Wellington would pay for that. If jail is taken off the table, that line item in our municipal code or in our municipal budget could be eliminated. So even having it as a potential violation or a potential sentence, excuse me, creates a problem for us. Because it's not been used, I I think it's something that's worth discussing. Now, I'm not actually asking you today to discuss that. Because I don't want to spring on you, Chapter 10, and I put it in the packet so you could see what we're dealing with. This is intended to be a long term project. But decriminalization was the first thing. That's what I really went into this looking at. There's a number of parts of our code that mentioned jail time. You can go to jail for violating our traffic code, you can go to jail for a number of criminal offenses. You can go to jail for a number of offenses related to the possession of animals. There's a lot of different places in our code where jail is is mentioned and I'd like to revise our code and limit it all of those. But as I started looking at Chapter 10, there's a lot more. Chapter 10 being the criminal code of the town of Wellington has bits of it that were taken out of state statute. Copy a big chunk of state statute and dropped it in the town code. And then for a different offense, they grabbed a code section from a town over here and dropped it in the new town code. And then for another offense, they might have written it themselves. And I say they, some attorney over the last, say, 50, 60 some attorney over the last 30 years who I nudge periodically to say he should have done a different job, but we won't talk about that. What that's led to is a lot of inconsistency and I like consistency. So a number of the changes that you see in that long list of Chapter 10 are, you're gonna say, what's what difference does this make? It's really just about standardizing the language. If we're going to go through the effort of taking a look at all of this, let's fix it all. Let's create a general offenses code that is standardized, uniform, easy to understand for the people that need to understand it. And then we also need to clean it up. There are code sections that I can't tell you the last time they were used if ever. The one that I always love seeing is we have a whole section about criminalizing use of slugs. This is a state statute. I'm, do you, have you ever prosecuted a slugs violation?
Jefferson County many years ago, that was something we put down.
Right. Use of slugs is where you take a vending machine and you insert something into a vending machine that's not a quarter. That's a slug.
I thought it was like the Trillius, out of the gun. It's like, that's such a strange thing.
Nope, use of slugs, it's about vending machines primarily. We we haven't prosecuted, I I don't, we might have once upon a time used it in the same way. You know what? I think if sheriff's officers want to arrest somebody for use of slugs, we can send them to, let's send them up to the district attorney instead of dealing with them locally. But so and there's another piece, a number of other items like that. I think this is an opportunity to look at the general offenses of the town, to to look at what is illegal in the town, what does the town want to enforce? So I I sort of want to put all of those things on the table. With the red line that's in front of you, a lot of it's just about, it's not substantive changes, a lot of it's about just making things more standardized. There's pieces of it I have removed. And I'm probably going to have some more conversation with the sheriff's office. There are items that I I initially thought, let's get that out of there and there's some deeper conversations. They said, yeah, actually, we we'd like to keep that one there, knowing that that's a violation of your municipal code might allow us to write it down into municipal court, again, keep that local. So the purpose of putting this in front of you today was just to introduce the subject to you. Our idea for code cleanup, something we want to do on a regular basis and we're thinking about doing this quarterly. The idea is the first time I see you, it's going to be something like this. Just giving you a very quick overview, not asking you to really have a conversation. You can ask me questions if you want, but presenting to you the section that we're going to look at. Then, in the second meeting of the quarter, ideally, the the second one would be the work session on the second month of the quarter is what we're ideally aiming for. We will come to you and say, all right, now you've, last month you got the code. This month, here are some suggestions we have, some real items of conversation to facilitate a conversation among the board at the work session. And then in the third month of the quarter is when we'd actually bring back to you, okay, now here's the real proposal, here's the ordinance. That being said, well, first of all, are there any questions quickly about Chapter 10 and?
What theft would not qualify for jail time? If it was just left into the for the county or the state? Just curious. I mean, I had my catalytic converter stolen, it cost me almost $2,000. I definitely would like to see that guy go to jail or gal or whoever it was.
That one's not coming to municipal court. Okay. I mean, I mean realistically, if the sheriff's office were to issue a summons for, were to find somebody and charge them with that, it's not being written into municipal court.
Can he kind of answer what might come into a municipal court?
I can tell you what, the the last theft charge, I can tell you two, the two last
Yeah.
actual theft charges that we had for adults, we're not going to count minors. One was a shoplifting of a $10 bottle of whiskey. That came to municipal court. The second one we had was theft of water. And that was somebody using a municipal fire hydrant to fill up a dump truck for construction purposes without using a meter. So in those two cases, we had, we had $10, let's be honest, we can handle that locally. And jail probably isn't a correct.
So minor shoplifting would be the, what you're.
Really minor. And the other one was water and the reason that was written into municipal court was it is of particular interest to the town of Wellington. And so we wanted to handle that one here as well. So either of those, I want to, but mostly we're going to see the $10 shoplifting, something like that. And again, if it's being written into court here, it's likely being written to court here, knowing that jail is not going to be an option already. And so I'd like to just remove that from our books. So.
Yeah, I'd hate to handcuff our police by not having that as being a deterrent on the bigger stuff. I know you get into some of the bigger towns. You know, the theft, anything under $1,000 is no bail pretty much out and.
Nothing's really been taken off the table from the case here. If it is serious enough where jail, at the discretion of the officers, it's not coming to us anywhere. By removing it as a potential penalty in municipal court, I don't know it's going to have any effect really on what's coming to municipal court because right now I can't tell you the last time somebody was sentenced to jail time by our municipal court. So it's already sort of treated this way, but by having it as an option, by having it as a potential sentence, if that $10 shoplifter comes to municipal court, even if we're not seeking jail time, if he comes to municipal court and if he's endogen and is eligible for a public defender and he says, not guilty, I want a trial, then the town's going to have, because jail time is a potential sentence, the town then will have to fund the public defender to to have that trial. If jail is, if if jail time is taken off the table, if we and we make the changes we're talking about to decriminalize our municipal code, that $10 shoplifter comes to court and he says, not guilty, I want a trial. We say, fantastic, we'll have a trial to the court. We don't have a jury, which has costs, we don't have to appoint a public defender because jail is off the table. So it really, the the actual effect is in terms of enforcement from the sheriff's office perspective is there is no change. This actually just probably clarifies for them that if they write it in municipal court, it's definitely not going to end up in jail.
I did have thoughts on this, but my gathering is this is the point of the next work session is.
Totally the point of the next, okay. I mean, if you have, if you have, and this is, right now is a really big picture conversation. Next one's more specific conversation and.
There are some other nuances, but I'll I'll save those to the next one because I do want to get into that because I think there are some other things that we need to look at on that point. So it's good points, but I'll wait till the next meeting and maybe I'll even talk to you beforehand, so.
And I'd be happy to, and and that's one of the reasons we want to do this is kind of a long term process is right now you can get this kind of big picture overview to be thinking about some of these things. The next time when we come to you with some, for some real conversation, you've been able to mull it over for a month or so. And I'd be happy to have offline conversations. Absolutely. I think that'd be very, that'd be great if you had those events.
I do have one thing because I know this could possibly take a bit, so I want to give you enough time to prepare for this. Section 10-9-20, I would really truly, and this is.
Hold on a second, let me get to 10-9-20 real quick.
Page 39. So and I know this is something that I have stressed in our mayor's meetings to Ms. Garcia, something that I have talked about, but I would really truly like to look at constitutional carry here in town for our residents. And I would hate to adjust this to continue to add carrying a concealed weapon, it is unlawful for any person to knowingly and unlawfully carry a knife concealed, carry a firearm concealed on or about his person. I would definitely like to consider the constitutional carry when we're looking at this section of the ordinance. So I know that could possibly take a little bit longer.
Define constitution, I'm I'm curious, define what you mean by the town allowing.
Oh, no permit for concealed weapons.
No permit.
Constitutional carry means that we recognize someone's constitutional rights to bear arms.
I think that that would end up being a violation of county or and or state law. And so I don't know that's something the town could do, but but I appreciate you bringing it up. I'm happy to look into it. So that's great.
Got it. Thank you.
And yeah, it's that sort of big picture. Now, so this is a long term project and the reason Chapter 10 has taken so long since 2019 for me to bring to you is is a big one. And I think it's going to facilitate a lot of really big conversation. And it's going to be a lot of work on my end and I think a lot of work on boards and my concern is timing. And that's been the concern for since 2019, which is why this has taken as long as it has. The plan is to do each one of these code sections once a, once a quarter. And so if I were to do this code section in quarter three, which sounded like a great idea, like I don't know, like a month ago or a couple of months ago. If I were to do a code section, that means I'm coming to you for a work session on August 15th to have a big old conversation about the offenses of the town of Wellington. And then I'm going to be to work, so I'm going to be doing a lot of work between now and then. Get that ready and then August 15th, I'm going to take all your information, I'm going to put a lot of time into drafting ordinances to come back say mid September. We've got a new finance director that was just appointed. We've got the budget process that is just kicking off with a brand new finance director. I've got, now, I am not personally involved in setting the budget or any, or really budget processes, I like to keep anything numbers related away from me as much as possible. But certainly in bringing the finance director up to speed, I know I'm going to be involved in a lot of meetings with him and not just finance, I think there's a lot of other really important issues coming before this board. On August 22nd, we have a hearing that was scheduled last week for annexation of sage bombs. On August 23rd, we will have the hearing of an appeal. We've got a lot of very big items that are coming up in August and coming into September and I personally have concerns with prioritizing this that I've been managed to not prioritize for four years. Yet it always seems like the wrong time. So I so I guess what I'm wanting to know, this is probably the bigger conversation, I'd like you the feedback, while I said a couple of months ago that I'm coming in on quarter three to bring this to you, is this the priority that you want me working on right now? And 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 personally, I think it's probably not, but I I want your feedback. If it's not your priority in quarter three, I'm still happy to have put this in front of you. I feel like I've been avoiding not prioritizing even getting this far for so long, that I like having this in front of you and having a bit of a conversation so that if I came back in quarter four to have, to 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 move forward more, I feel like you're going to be a little more prepared, but I want to know. We said we were going to do this once quarter beginning in quarter three. Is now the right time to be prioritizing this budget?
We have a quick question for the board that might kind of help direct that request for direction. When we're looking at the criminal code aspect, as you mentioned in the beginning, are we looking for heavy handed jail time, big fines? Or are we looking at a lighter, softer approach, more engaged with community service and just meeting state statute requirements?
And I agree, that's a conversation we need to have. The only concern I have is we to give that direction, one, I think that's the point of the next stage and two, we're also missing two members of our board. So I'm happy to go into that conversation if you want to right now.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is that just to kind of give him like a springboard, I think that the our missing board members will be able to provide some additional feedback. There will be lots of time to do that, but because, like when we're looking at adjusting fees and fines, that could, if we do that at the wrong time, that could negatively impact the staff's ability to provide accurate budget numbers. So I would, I personally would prefer to wait and see that information not be prioritized and prioritize the budget and the financial development.
I guess on my standpoint, I've been along with Dan for. Guess on my standpoint, um, yeah, I've been along with Dan for three of the four years of working on this, um.
I think you and I first met on this in two thousand twenty, so.
Yeah.
I know, are you, we've.
Um, so I would like to see this addressed because there are some things and one specific one that Dan and I discussed was animal at large, and we actually had someone that had to come to court and pay a fine because they walked their dog from their porch to their car without a leash. I kid you not, the dog walked from their porch to the car, not on a leash, on their own property, sat on the lawn.
I, I will say there was a lot more to it.
There's more to that, but that's some.
You're, you're correct, that was the actual violation.
That was the violation, they, they literally did not have their dog on a leash while it went from their house to their car, and that is actually a, a fence in our code right now in chapter ten. Like, literally, the town has to go and pursue that, so I think that there are things that need to be cleaned up. Um, within that, I, I have some differences of opinion on different things, so I think that I want to be careful because as um, trustee Wigan had pointed out, not, knows happening here, but it is happening in other places where either states or counties are beginning to lower the bar on what is a criminal offense, and I think that if we change things at the municipal level now to say, hey, we're not going to do anything with this, and then it gets changed later on, and we decide, hey, we actually should have this because it's not being dealt with at a higher level. Like, right now, LCSO can write it into district court, that could change in the future, and if we say, hey, we still think jail should be a penalty, then we have to switch it back. And I would, I think there's wisdom in keeping, there's a budgeted portion, so that if that happens down the future, we're not scrambling to try and figure out how do we come up to the money and do this, but again, I think that really is part of the longer conversation of going through this, but that's kind of my thoughts, so I, I think this should be addressed, I think it's not, Dan's not really a huge part of the budget, it's going to put more on our plates because we're going to have appeal, we're going to have this, and we're going to have, now, the nice thing is we can work on this over the next two weeks, we don't have anything for the appeal, we don't have any information for budget, so that really gives us probably another two weeks that we can focus on really kind of doing our deep dive into this so that when we do get the stuff for the appeal, when we start getting budget information, we can already have taken care of this portion, so I would be, my preference would be to just get this addressed and worked into our schedule.
I have two things. Um, one, the only issue I had was the conversation about not entitled to a trial by jury. So that one right there already bothers me, so just because everyone is entitled to certain things under their rights. Um, the other thing is I absolutely have to say I agree that I think maybe quarter four, this might fit more appropriately. Um, it was under my understanding that we could possibly get the packet back for the appeal earlier. I know, I just keep it my fingers crossed, but I feel in all fairness, it is something that probably needs our attention more right now than what this does, I'm not saying that I want to put this off, I'm just saying that I think quarter four might be a better option or alternative for us. I know that puts it around Christmas time, but we typically have a lighter schedule towards quarter four, so, yes, so that, that would be my hope. I understand and I do want to get this addressed, even if that means that we have to be like, okay, we're going to double down and accomplish two instead of one next quarter in two thousand twenty-four, like, something along those lines, I, I agree that it needs addressed, but I think really truly we have a lot on our plate coming up in general that needs our divide, our undivided attention. That's just my two cents, I'll go either way, but I would like to see it in quarter four if that is possible.
Trustee Wigan, any, any thoughts?
If we can do it this quarter, good, but if we, we need to push it on down, I think either one would work. Uh, I like what you're doing here, I think it does need to be cleaned up, I don't think we want to handcuff our sheriffs, our deputies here. And that's just the main concern that I would have, I want to make sure that they're protected and they have the rights to do their job, so.
And so, you know, I've, uh, I've had meetings with been working on this long enough, I've had lengthy meetings with Sergeant Redden, um, who preceded Sergeant Cherry, then I met with Sergeant Cherry on this and I've gone down and um, to the, the sheriff's department for Collins to talk with the number folks, so, um, definitely trying to make sure we get their input.
Trustee Mason?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm probably the outlier in the room where to say that if we had to be here till ten thirty every time we had one of the meetings, I'm not opposed, I would absolutely do that because I, I just love this stuff, but, uh, you know, certainly we understand what the priorities are, uh, certainly the budget, getting the audits done, getting the finance guys up to speed. Uh, are clearly going to be the priorities over the next, uh, couple of months, obviously, along with the, uh, with the, uh, well, that, not, not to be spoken of meeting. But, uh, uh, yeah, no, I mean, I, I certainly concur with the rest of the board if, if, if we need to push these types of things out just to make sure that we've got all the priorities done, I think that makes a lot of sense, but again, I, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to burning the midnight oil on just about anything, so that's, you know, that's just me though, so.
Well, thank you so much, trustee Mason. Um, well, we've heard it, you know, a couple, you know, the, the spectrum, you know, a sense of urgency, we want to get this wrapped up. Uh, we, we all have priorities and goals that we want to have accomplished as board members, so I appreciate trustee Gator, trustee Gator's drive to want to get this wrapped up. Um, but I am very concerned about having full board member participation in this conversation, as trustee Gator had also alluded to. Um, I do have a lot of concern that Mayor Chelsea isn't here able to help conduct these conversations, so I appreciate an opportunity to pump the brakes and slow the conversation down just a little bit. So maybe we, um, until trust, uh, sorry, Mayor Chelsea comes back, we can um, hope to see this at the October work session at the latest on or before, maybe that kind of gives, that's like a maybe a medium middle ground. That's fourth quarter, but the beginning of fourth quarter, budgets being presented, so we should be past some of these hurdles, maybe.
What I'll say is, I, I will strive to, to get this on the count, get this in front of you so that we can have it completed certainly by the end of the year, and I think completed, you know, and I think there's either September, October to have that next conversation, um, I.
An update in October?
We'll speed it up as much as we can, but I, but I do think, I, I don't think coming back in Au- in August with the next step is, is perhaps right at this time, so yeah.
Okay, so.
We'll.
Plan for an op- update in October then.
Yes, just a couple of quick things just for us to keep in mind, um, I, and we got this in the finance committee last night, so this is the draft, um, budget calendar. But we're slated to be presenting the budget in a work session for our October work session, that's planned for the bud- the budget to come to the board, which is typically a longer conversation.
Mm hmm.
Um, we also have beginning of October, we're doing a separate special work session to go through some of the, um, items. So just, uh, it's hard either way, we're at the beginning of budget if we do it now, we're in the middle to end of budget if we do it later. Um, so it's just something to keep in mind, we're going to run into budget whichever direction we go.
Understandable, thank you so much, trustee Gator, for, you know, keeping us on track with the schedule. Any other direction or?
Um, uh, one item I didn't, I didn't mention in talking about the substance here, uh, was mentioned briefly, something that I definitely want to make sure we get done, and I might simply bring, bring this one piece of this, uh, forward prior to, uh, maybe in October, um, is collections. Um, currently, the municipal court does not have collections, we need to have, um, uh, authority, legal authority to do that, and so it'll be an addition of a section, basically saying that if somebody didn't pay, the town court can, uh, or municipal court can engage a collection service and they can go after them and pursue the money. So, um, that's just another piece of this.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent, um, thank you so much. Next up on the agenda, we have the H- eighth judicial district attorney presentation by Mr. Gordon McLoughlin.
Good evening.
Thank you.
There have been trustees, um, I've already been told that, you know, following an accountant and another attorney, the third guy in a suit is going to bore everyone tonight, so I apologize in advance, but maybe not to trustee Mason who wants to be here till midnight. Um, but I, I won't keep you all here that long, um, if anything, it was actually a great segue from, uh, um, uh, town attorney Seth Bianza uh, about, um, some of the differences between the municipal court and what we do at the district attorney's office, which is county court and district court. Um, and that's why I'm here tonight, um, to let you all know what we do at the DA's office, um, what we're working on, uh, hear from you, how we can improve, and really, we want to serve the Wellington community. Um, Laramo County is, um, do you happen to have a clicker for that?
If you just come in advance.
Bad like yelling at you, shh, next slide.
My pleasure.
Okay, uh, but next slide, please. Um, so here we go, so we're the Eighth Judicial District, most people don't even know what that means. Uh, and I say this where I know a lot of the folks here with the nameplates probably do, but I know there's always a lot of community members at these meetings, uh, and watching online, which I very much appreciate, and so um, you know, whether it's a leader with a title or just the leaders that participate in these meetings, um, I want them to know who we are and be accountable to all you. So we're the Eighth Judicial District, we're Laramo and Jackson County, um, most folks know Jackson on the way to Steamboat, uh, as a gas station stop, but it's one of my two counties, we're very proud of that county as well. Um, but it's a huge county, right, Laramo County is bigger than the state of Rhode Island. Uh, and so I'm trying to get around to all the town boards, all the town councils, y'all are one of my last, in fact, Fort Collins, which is across the street from my building, is the only place I haven't been yet, um, probably because they also don't want to be there till midnight. Uh, and so this is the second-to-last place, so I'm, I'm glad to be here and be able to speak to y'all. Um, but so we're a big county, we have a lot of towns and we're, we're trying to make sure we're doing right by all of them, um, as some of this conversation was, right? Everyone has different expectations, every town is dealing with different issues. Um, the, the catalytic converter thing, right, is a perfect example, um, that's, that's a hot button issue for sure. Think I actually might have a slide later on talking about auto theft, but since you already brought it up, um, Laramo County is actually one of the lowest, maybe the lowest rate of auto theft on the front range, dramatically so when compared to like Adams County, Denver, and where, you know, the, the news on, you know, TV is showing us every night that there are huge auto theft rates. That being said, it's a big deal when someone's catalytic converter is stolen, it's a big deal when someone's car is stolen. Um, I actually worked on a bill this year, um, that made all auto theft a felony regardless of value, and the reason we did that is is one, because this is a serious offense, but two, because treating these crimes differently, saying that someone's car is worth a thousand bucks, that's a misdemeanor, but if someone's worth ten thousand, that's a felony, it really makes sense, right? If anything, the person who has the more expensive car is more likely to have a significant other, they can borrow a car from, insurance, they get some a rental, um, they can pay for an Uber, they can do something, the person with a thousand dollar car may not be able to get to work, they might not be able to pay the bills, they may not be able to get their kids to school, um, so that's a big deal, so auto theft is, is something higher on our radar. Catalytic converters, that just sort of right in that same wheelhouse, it can be debilitating for people. Um, those are all going to be written to the DA's office, so that's a perfect example of how that breaks down. Um, that's going to be a felony, that's always going to come to our office, it's not going to be handled by any of the municipal courts and, and we're taking those seriously. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this is our mission and vision, uh, I'll just read the vision quickly, to protect and serve Laramo and Jackson counties while creating a stronger community where the application of criminal justice is more equitable and no longer at odds with social justice. So what that means essentially is, is my first and foremost goal is to keep my community safe. Um, that is what we do at the DA's office, but how we do that can be done in a lot of different ways and things like having conversations about, hey, uh, like Mr. Sepienza talked about, when is jail the most effective, right? Are, are we going to have better bang for our buck, are we going to have a better chance of reducing recidivism, meaning making sure those people don't come back again by putting someone in jail or by giving them access to resources? Um, often that's something like mental health treatment, um, substance abuse treatments, um, and really making sure that we're giving people the resources so that they stop committing those crimes and we address the underlying issues that brought them into our office in the first place, and so that's one of the things we're focused on. Um, this is a roadmap of what we do, again, you'd be here past midnight if I tried to go through all these things, but I put this up here only to show that there is a lot going on at the DA's office, and that's one of the things I, I want to come out and talk to people about because people do have good relationships with their local law enforcement, here it's obviously the sheriff's office, a lot of the places I go, it's the, it's the town police department and the police chief that comes and reports. Um, and that is, of course, an incredibly important part of the criminal justice process. Then there's a whole nother backend that happens often behind closed doors, down in Fort Collins, to the Justice Center, and people don't know what happens. And so we want to make sure that people do understand what we do, um, and it's a long, long process, often a frustrating process, right? When defendants come into our doors, when victims come into our doors, that's often the worst time in their lives, right? It is not fun to have to see me in my professional life. Um, and so it's a, it's a, a, a very, um, labor-intensive, time-intensive process. Um, we have a large staff, we have forty-two attorneys, um, we're the largest law firm in, in northern Colorado, uh, and we are working on these cases, um, every single day. Um, from the moment law enforcement brings us those charges, to sometimes twelve, uh, eighteen, twenty-four months later when it goes to trial, to then maybe years after that when it's still in the appeals process, and we're fighting for accountability and the integrity of those convictions. Uh, this is sort of a snapshot of some of what we're doing, I'm going to talk about our data in a little bit. Um, but this is how many cases we are filing on a quarterly basis. Uh, essentially, it means that we're filing somewhere in the range of twelve thousand cases a year in our office, um, between all levels of charges. Um, there's a COVID line there, like as COVID did, um, funky things to the criminal justice system, probably like it did to all of town governance. Um, and so there's some bouncing up and down, um, that top line is misdemeanors, that yellow line is felonies, um, which short of shows this data is about seven years, um, a slow trajectory down in felonies in Laramo County over that course of seven years.
Which is awesome, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Um, these are some of the programs we're working on, again, just to touch on some of these really quickly, um, we started an adult diversion program at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-one, um, getting my years, uh, strung together here now, but our first full year was two thousand twenty-two. Um, as you can see there, we put, um, three hundred and fifty-eight people through that in two thousand twenty-two, and we had a ninety-one percent success rate. Diversion is exactly what it sounds like, we're diverting people out of the criminal justice system, so instead of, I'm using a ton of resources from our office, a ton of judicial resources, ton of probation resources, we are getting them out of the criminal justice system with things that are going to hold them accountable. Um, that might be something that just came up, uh, community service, um, that might be paying vic- restitution to a victim, um, that may be getting, um, some sort of treatments, and, um, we're making sure that they're trying to learn from that mistake, um, but that we're not expending a ton of resources and potentially setting that person back, uh, in, in their road to recovery. Um, so that program's been very successful. Um, we started a complex case prosecutor, that person's focused on a few things, um, this was in two thousand twenty-two, one of the big things they're focused on is prosecuting fentanyl distribution causing death. Um, fentanyl has, has ravaged Laramo County, it's ravaged Colorado, it's ravaged the US, it is everywhere, we are not unique. Um, in terms of the fact that it's impacting us, and that's good and bad, right? We're, we're not doing any worse, but the status quo for the nation is terrible. And so we're working very hard on those. Um, only, uh, a couple handfuls of these cases have been filed statewide, on three of them, we filed in Laramo County, um, one including a, a juvenile that was killed in Loveland, um, last year because of fentanyl, and so we're trying to hold those dealers accountable a- at a homicide-type level, um, because they killed someone in our community and is often vulnerable people in our community. Now, my philosophy, when we're talking about drug use, is that drug users, we need to direct them to treatment, that is how they're going to um, overcome that obstacle, that's how they're going to stop committing crimes, is getting them to treatment, and that's often more of a public health issue. But when we're talking about, and, and I know trustee Mason's on the, the opioid, uh, uh, I've got, I always get the acronyms confused, but Bateman Council for Laramo County, uh, and we're trying to make good use of those funds for things like treatment, prevention and education because the way to combat a lot of that is not necessarily through the criminal justice system. But when we're talking about dealer-level folks, uh, and folks that are actually distributing those drugs that are killing people in our communities, um, those folks we're going to try to hold accountable, and then we've been successful at so far. Um, transparency, that's why I'm here, um, the DA's office should really needs to be more transparent. Um, we published our first ever annual report, um, just a couple of months ago for two thousand twenty-two. Um, we are the only county department that had not published a, a annual report. Uh, and so now that's on our website, anyone can access that, see what we've been up to, our goal is to hopefully expand that every year. Um, that's why I'm out here, that's why I'm trying to go to community events, um, because we need to be accountable like everybody else. Um, Economic Crime Task Force, um, we have a prosecutor that's working on white collar crimes, um, we've gotten some big restitution verdicts, um, back to taxpayers, back to local residents. Um, one of them, uh, I'm reminded of because we're here in a library, um, the Pruder Valley Library, um, had something, uh, like a hundred thousand dollars stolen by an employee over the course of a couple of years. Uh, we got that hundred thousand dollars back to the library system and, and y'all know, I mean, that is, um, some of the, the great work being done for our community and for our kids, uh, and so we're proud of some of those results. Um, we reworked what's, uh, called our CERT protocol, our Critical Incident Response Team, um, that's what responds to officer-involved shootings, uh, and officer uses of force. Um, we did a huge rewrite of that with the, um, collaboration of all the law enforcement agencies in Laramo County so that we could make sure that we're investigating those really thoroughly, really unbiasedly, and that whatever the result may be, whether that may be charging an officer, whether that may be saying that, uh, action was justified, that we can stand behind that to the community and, and be proud of that result and explain to the community why that decision was made. Uh, and so all of our law enforcement partners, including obviously those that patrol here, the sheriff's department, were, were crucial partners in that, uh, and we're very supportive of, of the product that we have, which, um, I think in my, um, unbiased opinion is, is the leading protocol in the state of Colorado in terms of making sure that these are thorough and transparent to the community. Uh, and then lastly, victim services, um, to highlight that, a lot of folks don't know we do that, um, they think we're prosecutors. Uh and then lastly, victim services. Um to highlight that, a lot of folks don't know we do that. Um they think we're prosecutors. Uh all we do is prosecute. We're just attorneys. You know, we pound our fist on the lectern in the courtroom, and that's that's what we do. And we do some of that admittedly, but we have a robust victim services department. We have uh seven uh victim advocates um that are working with victims of domestic violence, of sexual assault, of other crimes every single day. These things happen more frequently than we think. Um not every time is that there's a sexual assault is the Colorado covering that. Domestic violence in um just like fentanyl, it is everywhere across America. We are no exception in Laramo County. So we have advocates working really hard on those things. Um they're talking with victims. They're walking them through the the process, which is complicated. They're dealing with um trauma from those victims. They're act uh connecting them to resources around the community. And so that they're a great group. One thing to highlight in twenty twenty two uh is we got a courtroom facility dog. I should have brought him. He doesn't wear suits, um though he has the nice official vests. But what he does is he is one more part of that team to help victims in their most traumatic times come in. You know, when we uh dealing with a child victim, perhaps of a sexual assault, and you know, we are saying you might have to testify at trial. That is trauma that I cannot describe. I wish I could take that away. I wish you never had to say that to a victim. I wish we never had to take these cases to trial. And people just came in and said, hold me accountable. Um but that's not how it goes. And so we have to do that. A lot of cases that don't actually go to trial, we have also prepared for trial. And so we're working and preparing um hundreds of cases a year that then get resolved in in a fair resolution, but haven't gone to trial. But we have prepped those victims. We've had those conversations, uh and we've been ready to do that. And so that's very hard. That dog, um he's been trained for two years and was uh by a nonprofit that then gave him to our office. And again, he's sort of a grounding force when we're having these meetings with victims and can actually be uh in the witness stand, under the witness stand when a a witness is testifying if the judge so allows. So that's that's a great benefit. Uh and then the last thing to highlight here is our data transparency project. So talking about transparency, we launched at the September of twenty twenty two, um what is among the largest data transparency projects of any prosecutor's office in the country. So this is all on our website. Um and uh the the link is up there in the slide. And we're using this to A make data driven decisions, um because that is what's expected of a prosecutor's office now in twenty twenty three. That's not what prosecutors have historically done, um but it is what we need to be doing now. So we're using this data in our decisions. We're also uh publishing it to the community so that folks understand what we do and why we do it. So I I I picked just a few things to show you all. Um some of these are from what we call sort of our background dashboard where we can filter from the different agencies. Obviously here, um I wrote whole county below that LCSO because this is not Wellington specific. We can't filter for that. But I, you know, I've been trying to show all the boards their local agency. So these, this is that same case filed graph, but this is for Laramo County Sheriff's Office and what they're filing with us. You can see those numbers um have sort of been pretty steady. There's obviously some COVID differences there, um but that's sort of the percentage breakdown. This is the, I've just got some player, the the percent of cases filed by type. And so the top one is our whole district, and then that lower one is um the sheriff's office. You can see, um you know, traffic is a pretty big part of that. It's a little bit smaller part of the sheriff's office, which makes sense just because we're talking about more rural county roads and less um sort of inner city traffic issues that maybe Fort Collins or Loveland deal with that that bump up that traffic stat. But that that top one, again, for the judicial district, that's something that's available on our website. So when people want to say, what's that type of crime going on? I'm sort of similar to the conversation y'all had about, hey, what are the municipal crimes being charged in Wellington? Well, folks in Laramo County now want to know what type of crime is going on in Laramo County. They can see that on our website. Uh this is another way to look at the type of crime. These are both on our public website. Uh on the left there, that twenty seventeen dot is highlighted because this is the breakdown from twenty seventeen. And on the right, twenty twenty two, because that's that's the last full year of data. You can see there, a lot of those are pretty similar. Um what jumps out at me um when I look at those two is that traffic is actually down. I think that's a a lot of law enforcement agencies have sort of reoriented some of their focus and they're focused less on some of the specific traffic violations and more on some of the other types of crime. Um so that's sort of the biggest bar change there in those types of crimes. Violent crimes, um that's of course something people are always interested in. This is a judicial district as a whole. Again, what it shows there is essentially violent crime has been pretty flat for about seven years. That's in a time where our county has grown pretty significantly. So per capita, that rate is down. We're of course always trying to keep that as low as possible, um but that is a a pretty low steady rate over the course of a quite a long period. Motor vehicle thefts. I I told you I'd get to that. Um this is not something from our data dashboard, but this is again, I get asked about it all the time. So I I try to inform people about it. Um what you can see there is per hundred thousand residents, our rate of car theft is sixteen point five. This came from the Common Sense Institute, which is a a a research group out of Denver. And uh you know, if you look at something like Adams County, it's two hundred and sixteen. So we are lower by um quite a few factors here when we're talking about auto theft. That's not to minimize the issue, as I said. When it happens to someone, it is a big deal. But um we are not uh at the mercy of some of these crazy numbers like some of those um more metro counties are. And that is it. So this is some of our contact information um for the public watching as well. We are at the Justice Center down on Mason and La Porte. Um folks can come in. They can talk to us, our investigators, our advocates. We want to be accessible to people, um but there's a lot of information on our website. It is growing every day, the amount we're putting up there. We're also on um Facebook and Twitter, um trying to tell the community what we're up to, whether that's a sentencing on a significant case or an expansion of our diversion program or something else. There can be a lot of information found out there as well. So with that, um I thank y'all for your time, but I'm happy to take questions from anyone um about what we're doing or or feedback or whatever you have for me.
I had the pleasure of touring the uh community judicial alternative.
We need justice alternatives.
Justice alternative. Now, do you assign them to there or or how do they end up going to there?
That's a great question. So community justice alternatives is the county department that runs um community corrections, which a lot of people knows the halfway house, as well as some other programs like work release and work enders. So often, um technically, a judge is going to sentence someone. So a judge is going to say you have to go to work release for thirty days. But most cases are resolved with a plea. Um and that is across the country. You know, ninety eight percent, give or take, of cases are resolved with a with a negotiated resolution, a plea, not a trial. And so when we're offering, uh making offers to defense counsel or to the public defender's office, um that's, those are the things that we would offer. So we might look at a case and say, you know, this person should be um uh having some sort of sanction, right? This is a serious crime. We need to make sure they are being held accountable. We need to make sure we're doing right by a victim potentially. Uh and so this isn't something where they should get diversion um or just probation. They should be serving some sort of time in jail. But we also don't want them losing their job, um because that's not going to be good for anyone that's going to set them back, that's going to set their family back, their kids back. They might lose their house, their job. So we might choose something like work release where they can serve a sentence uh at community justice alternatives, but also get out during the day, work their job, and hopefully keep on the right track. So that's in, that's a a type of situation where we may use community justice alternatives. The community corrections, which is sort of across the street from that building, same complex there. Community corrections is um often what we think of as a pre department of correction sentence. So department of corrections being prison, uh if someone is perhaps not quite at the level that straight prison is appropriate, we'll give them the opportunity of community corrections. Again, that allows them to have a job, but be very heavily supervised during their day to get treatment, to have those things with a big potential consequence hanging over their head is if they do not succeed at the community corrections, they will go to prison. That's what community corrections means.
Thank you.
Trustee Teets.
Would you say that the divi diversion program um is, I had noticed it was at ninety one percent? Do you guys include this community facilities as part of that diversion, or is it a totally different statistic and outcome?
Totally different.
Got it.
Yep. So when we say diversion in my office, we mean um no actual sentence from a judge. So we're there coming in our door. We're identifying that this is a low level case, um often a first time offender, often a young adult where we're saying this person needs something really um finite and specific. They need to accomplish that, and they need to never come back here. If they don't accomplish it, we can then refile that case. We can still prosecute that case. But our goal is that they're not seeing a judge, they're not receiving a sentence.
Trustee Gator.
That was my only question is what defines success? So you just explained it. Thank you.
And and success is is tricky uh to expand since you're interested. We want to expand our diversion program because it's a great use of taxpayer dollars, um because it's very low use. It then lets us prioritize the more significant, serious cases with our attorney time. And it's going to get people on that right track quicker. The example we say is if if folks have kids and the kid steals a cookie and you say, okay, you got to serve twenty minutes of timeout, and you can serve that twenty minutes of timeout twelve months from now, they're not going to learn a lesson. And that's the criminal justice system, unfortunately. One of the metrics on our data transparency website that um uh all the districts that participated, we developed this with seven other judicial districts in Colorado, um was timed a felony resolution. And the time the felony resolution of a case has grown since twenty seventeen, which is what all of our data goes back to. And then COVID happened and it grew steeper. But it had been growing since twenty seventeen, and no one realized the problem had 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 gotten that bad. So we're trying to, we're trying to decrease those times. That's one of our our big focuses with this data project. That being said, the cases just take a long time. And so if we can get someone the same or very similar uh treatment, consequences, uh resources through diversion, that may make an impact tomorrow because our diversion staff may meet with someone in the building and say, okay, go sign up for this program tomorrow. That may actually make a much bigger impact. So we're trying to expand that. Now, as we expands, right, we are taking more cases and and that success rate may not stay at ninety one percent necessarily, but we're making a a huge impact with those high success rates.
Mr. McLaughlin, that, thank you for coming down. Excellent presentation. Um obviously, we've touched on a diversion a lot tonight, and I, obviously, that's something that's very close to close to me as far as uh the abatement council and that sort of thing. I was just kind of curious, as far as when the uh behavioral health policy, uh it's the Laramo County Behavioral Health Center comes online, I I would presume that's going to provide you guys with some additional resources to kind of continue down that uh diversion path.
Yeah, I I think so. Um you know, obviously, we need to see how that shapes up. But that's an incredibly important resource um to deal with that problem that again is going to be best solved through non criminal justice resources. Criminal justice can address and mitigate some of those things, but we're never going to solve addiction in the courthouse. Um and so that that facility is is very important, um and I think is going to give us some of those resources. You know, we have some specialty programs, um what we call problem solving courts. So for instance, we have a drug court and a DUI court that are looking specifically at, you know, really um putting resources into helping folks that are um in the worst situations that really need, you know, they don't need a a of eight hour alcohol class. They need months and months and months of court supervision. And so we're separating those people out. That facility is something that's going to help. I think I finished it. Is going to help with uh with those that are really on that um serious need of resources end. So it might be a different population than, for instance, we're seeing with that ten dollar candy bar theft that we're sending out a diversion. But it is another opportunity to solve those problems.
Well, I love the opportunities that the diversion programs provide, you know, working in local government. I've seen it be successful several times, working with youth. You know, if you can quickly get them redirected, sometimes you can spark a passion in them that creates a change and puts them on a whole different life path. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for your presentation this evening. It was uh full of very good information and also a plus for entertainment value. So nice shot.
Wow.
For presentations, it was a a plus for entertainment, so.
Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time and I appreciate what you do here.
Okay. All right, um we don't have any other items on the work session agenda. I adjourned this meeting to eight sixteen PM. Bye. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.